Maken, all set? Here we go. Good evening. I'll call Brandon Select Board to order at 7 o'clock on October 11th. Is there a motion relative to the agenda?
Someone.
I'll second it.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
I guess I'm gonna suggest we add an executive session to discuss the police unions.
Yes, okay. So that's 8B. Would that be okay, the very last thing? Before adjournment? Okay, so we would like to add an executive session tonight to discuss a grievance from the police union. And this comes under 1VSA 313A1. Anything else to change? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was just amended by adding the executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both say no. It's unanimous, the ayes have it. Item 2, approval of the board minutes of September 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve those. I'll make a second, but I got some discussion on that.
Very good.
And it doesn't have to be a change or anything, because it was on... It was on the APRA funding. Jim Emerson, he was stating, and I didn't hear it, and I apologize that I didn't catch it then. Oh, about the town's electric costs and save 3% or more for the taxpayers. I just, I guess I kind of sort of disagree with that. And I would've said something then if I paid attention to it.
So what part of the notes is this?
It's on page 4, about a quarter of the way down, where Jim had stated, "He would offset the town's electric costs and save 3% or more for the taxpayers." You know, I believe that now that needs to have more research, and I just, I guess I don't agree with... I don't agree with that totally. I just, I just wanted that in minutes that I, and if I had noticed, if I had heard him the last meeting, I would've mentioned something, and I just, I just wanted to mention it, you know, that's all. Just to have it in these minutes.
Okay.
Something that I didn't agree with.
So nothing to change in the previous minutes, but something to add in this previous minutes?
Yeah.
That's good. Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
No.
If not, all in favor of approval of the minutes of the previous meeting as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both say no, the ayes have it unanimously. Item 3 is the town manager's report.
This is my report from September 27th to October 8th. I attended the town fair and the annual passive VLCT meeting on September 30th. The town staff has been attending many of the VLCT virtual meetings throughout the last two weeks. Corner Square parking ride work continues. Lights will be installed this week. Paving is scheduled for the end of the week, weather permitting. Attended an IRPC meeting on October 6th on the flood resilient community. Communities fund. This is the new program that funds properties that are just outside of special flood hazard area that don't qualify for FEMA funding but have sustained flood damage. I currently have four properties on Newton Road that are applying for this program, and the first deadline for applications is October 29th. In the second round, we do January 31st. The highway department has completed our 2021 MRGP projects, and the IRPC completed a visit last week to review the projects. We were awarded $20,340 grant last year to complete this work. The two flashing speed limit signs have been installed on Grove Street and Franklin Street. So far, they seem to be effective. We have received $16,743.23 in delinquent taxes and $10,496.73 in delinquency since letters were sent on August 20th. The remaining delinquent accounts will be turned over to our attorney at the end of October. And the new backhoe arrived on October 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Raston. Questions from the board for the town manager?
I have one. I was looking over some of the VLCT stuff, and one of the things I stumbled onto was about cybersecurity. And I was interested to see if they promote the idea of an IT security audit. And I was kind of curious, whether you had any interest in that. It seems like a great way to just, you know, know a little bit more about best practices, whether or not, you know, our system is kind of robust. Is that something that you'd see in our future?
Actually, we've stated in the past, we've already started that process with actually Bill and Jackie, and so we've been speaking with Dean Silaway to move forward with all of our IT stuff and cybersecurity and everything else to make sure we're secure. So we should have a proposal here pretty soon on that, and we'll be discussing it probably more in budget season, but it is more of a budgetary item. But yeah, I think we've, I think you guys have had what, three meetings with Dean so far?
Yes, yes. And it was addressing, Jackie filled out, completed a, I guess, a bit of an audit that VLCT returned back with a questionnaire that talked about some of the deficiencies. And we met with Dean, and they've come up with the outline, told us what we, you know, more solid, told us the next meeting that talks about exactly what we need to do to be okay and take it out of the hands of neophytes or people like myself that really shouldn't be doing IT.
No, this sounds great. That is what I was hoping. So we'll get some kind of an update soon.
Excellent. Thanks for the question. Thanks for being on top of it already. That's clearly one of those places where an ounce of prevention would be worth a pound of pure, kind of thing. So thank you. I had a question about these Newton Road vials. Did you hear back from the felt at Far East End?
I have not.
Not yet, okay. I'll follow it. Any questions from the public for the town manager? Questions or comments? There's nobody on Zoom, so I won't invite anybody on Zoom.
Mr. Chair, I do have a comment on your comment about, okay, Newton Road.
Yeah.
So just to let folks know, this, this new process is incredibly simple. It's a four-page application that I do, seven eighths of the application, and basically the folks just have to sign the voluntary agreement thing. So because this isn't FEMA funded, you know, the funds are already there with the state. We don't have to go through the FEMA timeline, which is nice. So it's, it's a much quicker and easier process so far. So it's great. I was hoping more folks would be...
Yeah. Well, still four is good. It's, yeah, I'll consider it. Mr. Moore?
Oh, yeah. First of all, I want to extend my apologies to my boss, the town manager. For not sending my report out before I left at 5:00 in the morning on Friday to go visit my daughter, let's talk about rec news. One thing in particular I wanted to make sure was, shout it out, was Emily Lowell, Otter Valley High School graduate, is the field hockey coach at Castleland University. It's going to be Vermont State College, something, something. But the, she brought 14 of her girls over, and they spent Wednesday doing various good deeds around town, including spreading of four tandem loads worth of wood chips at the playground to bring us back into appliance and painting four picnic tables down at Estenbrook. And I just want to thank them for their volunteerism.
That is great. So this is the Castleton?
The Castleton field hockey, girls' field hockey.
Field hockey.
Yeah. I found his own, Emily Lowell is the coach, and we're looking for volunteer opportunities, and so we did that oblige. And also, on the heels of a successful weekend, I think, when I was gone, the craft fair, our second annual fall craft fair, which usually results in a sizable donation to the Dog Park Initiative. Last year, they were giving $2,000 to the Dog Park. So participate in that kind of a donation again this year. So, and that went well.
Thank you. Any other, anything else for the town manager? Always public comment available in any agenda item, but we do have one item exclusively for public comment. So any public comment tonight, items not on the agenda, bring it back.
I just want to say that all the tourists who passed two months or so have, really, a past year and a half, have just commented how nice the town looks. Terry just came out today and said that a former town manager in another state was here visiting, spending a couple nights at Brandon Inn, and he said, "I'm amazed." He said, "This, this town looks incredible. The green spaces are incredibly well kept, the sidewalks, the lights, everything." He says, "You must have really good town management." I'll just leave it at that, so.
I'll second that, Mr. Carr. I have, just today, I met with some tourists of mine who are on their third trip with us, and they came in two different construction years. And then COVID happened and stuff, and then they came back. And, and they said, you know, the first time and the second time, they were like, "Boy, this is kind of, you know, this seems like a project," you know? And then this time, they said, "It was so worth it to them." They felt like whatever we went through was a great result, and I concur. Mr. Guys?
Yeah, and I was gonna follow in that same vein and give you an update on the Solar Fest. Six of their crowd came up to Brandon on Friday, and three of us from Brandon, Jim Emerson and Jack Schneider and I, met with them. And we spent five or six hours driving around the different properties. We had lunch at Cafe Veronce, and it was a really great time. I mean, amazing weather. I don't know if you remember that day, but it was like quintessential gorgeous. And, and so it put us in the best possible way. It's looking like we're at the front of their list, so we're hoping that Solar Fest, you know, follows through. It's up to them now to make their deal with wherever they're going to get land from. But we did a lot of, actually, the energy committee did a lot of rustling up opportunities, including people that weren't even necessarily intending to sell their land, but were, was possible for Solar Fest. So that was very good. And I wanted to bring up a couple other, according to the public, you know, things not on the agenda. One is the soliciting of subcommittee reports. Have you started doing that yet? And, and is the deadline going to be December, end of December? I think that's what we did last year.
That would be the latest deadline you could do, right?
I think so.
That would be ideal. For Tom or for Tom or?
I mean, we've been taking, last year, we took them very, very late. But if we told them, we said, "The end of December is the deadline," I think that'd be great.
Is that enough time for the printer to arrange the space?
Yep.
Yeah?
I think so.
Okay. Does that, does that come from the board, or can that come from you, or, like, the, the general request to all the boards and committees that the annual report is happening? That was us last year.
Well, it's usually been from whoever puts the town report together, so.
It can be from us. All right. So is that fine with everybody if we just ask all the boards and committees and officers to make the reports?
And there's one more thing that came out in my talk. I was talking with Sue Gage about a couple of other things. And she said that there's some new stuff coming out about elections. And it will benefit, and it's actually, she forwarded me this thing here. It says, "The local election ballot mailing, amending of paragraph 2680. The legislative body may vote to mail a ballot for any local election to all registered voters." And the school board may also vote to mail ballots. And so it seems like it may make sense to coordinate with the schools if we want those to happen efficiently, where we save some money perhaps. And so I'm suggesting that it might make sense to have one of us reach out to the school board, or to the school superintendent, and just find out what their intentions are, and if, if in fact it makes sense to do this, to share the cost of, of the mailing.
I think collaboration, or examining whether collaboration is possible is in the taxpayer's interest, not only from money, but from a clarity point of view, like to get one ballot in the mail or whatever.
And Sue made it sound like this was still a slightly moving target, but it's, it's coming together quickly, and that's why she was wanting to forward information to...
Well, as the chief election official, should Sue be the one to coordinate with them?
I think what she was pointing out is that it's us who need to make a decision as a legislative body.
Yeah, we could authorize it, but...
And I think that that's...
Implementing it would be...
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy to ask Sue if she wants to reach out. She seemed to imply that it would, it might make sense for one of us to reach out.
I think one of us reaching out is not always the best idea. I'd rather either have Sue do it or Dave do it.
So, yeah, I would think probably Sue too, but so, does this like, is ballots going to get mailed to everybody, whether they want them or not?
As I understand, state ballots get mailed to everybody for the national, for the, the election of federal offices, which includes, yeah.
We have no state ballots. But that will be like next August.
We have, we have nothing on November for sure.
Right. She suggested that we could pass, we could, we could say that we want to mail ballots to all of our townspeople, and that that's what many towns will be doing this year, to follow up on the, where we did during COVID, where we mailed out ballots.
For town meetings.
For town meetings.
For town meetings.
And, and the coordinating with the school board, because they're gonna have to decide whether they want to send theirs out as well.
Didn't we mail them out if folks asked to get them mailed out though? We didn't. I don't think we did a bulk thing on...
I thought everybody knew.
I think because...
I know, I didn't take questions.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't take questions.
Because of COVID, everybody acted. Yeah.
And I think that's what their intentions will do again this year.
Don't remember that.
Well, which is also why I think if, if we're gonna mail them out, we need to make that motion and decide that that's what this, the legislative body may vote to mail a ballot.
So is it us, so the town is paying?
That's what I understand about this one.
And the school district did it, like, separate from us, they paid, mailed their own ballot, and they chose to...
It's very analogous to the town report.
Yeah. I, I have no personal objection with mailing the town ballot to every voter, every registered voter, and to coordinate with the school board. I'm not sure I want to, like, make a motion to authorize it tonight before we talk to the school folks. Do you know what I mean?
Okay. So do you want to contact the school folks, or do you want me to do it?
I would like Sue Gage to do it. I've heard from her six times.
Well, is she not here? Sue, when I had talked to Sue, it sounded like Sue wasn't seeing it as her role to do that. And when I talked to her, she said, you know, that...
I don't really think it's my role. I mean, it's just like...
He does have kind of nothing to do with town elections.
Elections, I'm kind of out of it.
Well...
Wouldn't it, would someone from the BCA?
That would be my feeling, would be so.
Who's the BCA chair?
Mike Hunter.
I don't think that might be the way to go with the BCA. There's no one crossing lines, Tim. I was, you know, like, because I really have nothing to do with it.
Oh, I, I get it. I get it. And I think it's as easy as a phone call at this point to Jeanne Collins, to just, you know, put it on her radar. And she would bring it to her board, and they would talk about it, and we would talk about it. And, you know, we'd either do it together or not. And I, I don't think it's anything more than that.
Maybe at this, at this early stage, rather than ask the BCA chair to do something like this, maybe we could have, Tim, just talk to Sue.
Come by me with Sue tomorrow and discuss it.
Okay. Well, yeah. I think everybody's, nobody's trying to shirk this. Everybody's just trying to make sure that it's done in the most appropriate manner, with the appropriate officers being involved very early in the process. And Sue is the chief election official for the town of Brandon. And whether, I think maybe she just needs to have, okay, the sense of the board is this or that. So I don't, I spoke for myself. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak for themselves about what their sense is about the possibility of coordinating with the school district in sending ballots to all the registered voters for the March town meeting.
I don't think I should do that. I think it probably... They're gonna send it out. I mean, why not send stuff to the school?
Any other input, objections?
Phil Moore has a question.
Phil Moore has a question.
As a longtime member of the BCA, also as a member of the school and the town district, I think Sue serves, Charlene might know, doesn't she serve as a clerk? Are you, are you the clerk?
I'm a clerk.
Yeah.
I work for the district.
The school.
I mean, but, but, yeah, I mean, if, like, if Tim were gonna reach out, like, we should probably reach out to the school board chair versus Jeanne, because Jeanne is like the town manager for the, you know...
They have a different scenario, really. They have governance, governance board now. Policy governance board.
That's true. Interesting.
It just needs to get on their agenda, that's all.
The school board will make the decision to do it. Sharon's saying the school board will be the decision makers.
Lori Bertrand is the school board chair, yeah.
So is it the consensus of the board that Dave should talk with Sue Gage tomorrow? And absent Sue making an outreach to the school board, then Dave could inform the board, the select board, and the select board will be okay with Tim reaching out to the school district? Is that fair? Good summary. Seems like that's the consensus. Okay, let's go on that basis. And then when we hear back from them, we can take votes and stuff to authorize or not. Other items not on the agenda? Okay, moving along. Set the public, set the public workshops, set the budget workshop schedule. So we traditionally have two in November, two in December, but that's not etched in stone anyway. So what's the pleasure of the board about putting the town budget together? What's your, Dave, what's your timeframe, what's your town, what's your department heads, and all that kind of stuff? Have you set that up with them?
Yeah, I mean, if we just pick dates, we can schedule. We know Rex, we know Rex Alves will go, so.
Scheduled to meet those dates?
Yeah, if we have dates, then I can set it up.
Someone just added it. Do I find out who they are?
Yes.
So the phone number at 978-875-2599. Can you identify yourself for us?
Uh, this is Chris Moore. I was just managing to get back into service. I was assuming you guys are moving forward your...
Yeah, we're actually in a regular select board meeting now.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Are four sessions too many? Just about right?
I think it worked.
Worked about right?
Pretty well.
How about the budget committee? We have...
Do we still have one?
We have Jan.
And...
You have the mid-pig?
The mid-pig was left.
And Lee is left.
There was one of them. Barry?
Barry is still on.
Barry, Barry was still on. So we should probably consult Barry.
And then maybe look for a third?
Well, we could, I don't know. These have been pretty lightly attended. I like, I like having some more folks participate. We can, you know, offer to have anybody who's interested send a, send a short note to the town manager.
We still have time if we're gonna do it in November and December.
And everybody can be on, everybody can participate in any of the workshops. You know, they're all public workshops. They're not executive sessions or any kind of, so.
Maybe we put a notice in Trumpport Forum, we're looking for a third?
Isn't that what we're doing?
I have that.
Is that me against it?
Yeah, I'm against that. Others? Other opinions?
You do it?
All right.
So Dave, will you put that up, or do you...
I am not on Trumpport Forum.
Yeah, I'll, I can put that.
Okay.
But I'll have him send a letter of interest to Dave.
Sure.
All right, we'll do that. But we can still set up the, at least the November ones.
Yeah, we're in December, why not set them all?
Okay. Any class, any certain nights work, don't work?
Not the fourth.
Not the fourth? We had been doing Tuesdays and Wednesdays.
Tuesdays offended. We do Tuesdays in November, Mondays in December.
Something like that, or, yeah. No? November... My calendar's a little bit...
And, and could you remind me what time we usually do these?
Six to eight. I think six to eight.
I'm saying we do them six, because there were one that I missed because of the sixth hour, but that's fine, I mean...
I think we do them six to eight.
Tuesdays tend to be difficult for me. If we could do them Wednesdays, that would be better. Or Thursdays?
I don't want to do, I, I would like to not do Thursdays, because that's usually when I have, or you don't plan any meetings, so.
Maybe do them all on Wednesdays? That's difficult.
Wednesdays are really hard for me.
Okay.
But we meet the 8th and 22nd of November.
We don't want to.
But Mondays.
We could do Mondays on non-selective, that'd be great for me.
November 1st, too early, not one on?
Or...
Let's get a 15, so we meet the 8th.
15th and 29th.
15th and 29th?
That's really good.
November? Budget committee, or budget workshops. Monday, November 15th, 6 o'clock. Monday, November 29th, that was nicely, it was the 5th Monday, 6 o'clock. And then you want to plan a couple in December?
How about the 6th and the 20th?
6th and 20th? Monday, December 6th at 6 o'clock. Monday, December 20th at 6 o'clock. Sound good? Dave, could I ask you to reach out to Jan and Barry and tell them that that's the little schedule that we've set upon and hope that, hope that might work?
I probably won't be here in 50.
Yeah, I think unless there's some wild curveball coming down the pike, I mean, it might just have to be understood that we'll have a quorum of the board, but maybe not the whole board at all four of these, you know, sessions. We will talk about it as a full board after it's, after it's been worked out. Okay, that was great, thank you. Item 6, national opioids settlement.
So this came to us, Sue and I, actually, the last week. And so, if you guys have read it, it's, there's funding coming to the state of Vermont, and might trickle down to us, who knows? Unless it was on the opioid settlement, because, well, there's a couple companies there. So the reason I brought it to you guys is, Mark and I would say, well, you know, what have we got to lose? But it looks like we have to have attorney involved in this. And I just wonder what sort of significance or intent in this process it's gonna make with us spending money.
Is it, you're understanding that it's intended to go toward, like, law enforcement and first response kinds of costs that we've already incurred?
I, I don't know what costs we have incurred on any of them.
Well, we as a, as a town that has a police department would have some cost.
In, in sort of the order of magnitude that we're talking about here? You really don't know?
I don't know. This is all I've received, and if you read it, it's a really bizarre letter.
And the same thing with the order of magnitude with legal involvement. I mean, do you know, have any idea what we were, we're needing from a lawyer there?
No, but they're suggesting that we use legal counsel on this.
I mean, it seems very, it seems like there's very little need for legal counsel. So as much as I can understand having somebody take a, a look at this, it doesn't sound like we're into a lot of legal work. I mean, that's, as I read it, it doesn't seem like that's likely. And so if there's some positive coming out, it's mostly what I got out of reading it is that it helps to have people participate, to show interest, to help the Attorney General's office show that there's actually, you know, people that want to support the process. I mean, it seems like if we could participate with a relatively small cost, it seems like a good idea. Did, did you read this stuff, and did any of that out of that?
Yeah, I, I think that we're gonna be part of this first line, right? This 15% to state subdivisions to be used to evade the opioid crisis. And my question was mostly like, is this kind of an after the fact? You know, here's, here's recognizing that you've spent some money to respond to, you know, overdoses and things like that. Or is it gonna be like, here's some money, set up something to, you know, prevent, you know, further opioid abuse or incidents, or that kind of thing? And I'm not sure, you know, what, well, like you say, who, who knows what we're talking about? We're talking about a few thousand dollars, we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, and it seems like it's designed to address costs that are not obvious. In other words, I, I get the feeling that these funds are gonna come across somewhat unencumbered, so we can be creative about how we use them. I mean, it doesn't seem like we have to show bills and say, like, you know...
No, but, and I think the line that, you know, you're probably referring to is on the first page, where it says, "Generally, the more subdivisions that participate, the greater the amount of funds that flow to that state and participating subdivisions." And to me, like, that makes sense. Yes?
I just did a little Googling. The, the last year, the state's getting about 60 million.
Six, 60 million?
60 million, okay.
60 million? Out of 22 billion, which is, that's this...
Well, we're a small state.
We're a small state. And that's a small state now.
But still 60 million divided by 200 and someone a town, even if we looked at it that way, and a lot of towns aren't gonna participate.
It's 15% of 60 million.
Right.
Right? 15% of 60 million divided by 200. Fifteen percent of sixty million, divided by two hundred and fifty towns. Okay. Nine nine divided by two twenty. So... I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we need the town attorney at this point.
Okay.
And I think we ought to sign up for it, if for no other reason than it appears that the more people, the more towns that sign up for it, the more Vermont could end up... I mean, there, there is, there's crisis, you know, there's all kinds of impacts all over Vermont, and, uh, it's kinda like getting, getting them on the ballot, so. And like, like Dave said about other things, like I don't wanna see it downside at this point. If it turns out to be it's so complicated or there's so many strings attached to it, you can decline to take the money. Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just gonna say if we could, we can decline anyways, so.
Yeah, let's see what happens.
Okay.
Cool.
So do you want me to be the person that like puts the contact for this?
Yeah.
Right?
Perfect. Any public input on that, national opioids, so, thank you for the public input bill already, great. Item seven, ARPA funds discussion. What's new in ARPA land?
What's new in ARPA land?
It was very cool to have Eric last time, was it Eric Paul? Yeah, he was helpful.
So... I don't know, maybe I'll let Tracy chat.
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm gonna, I guess, I'd like to go with the plan making motion, that, uh, we do this to take care of what infrastructure we've already got. Starting with the pump station on Newton Road. Union Street project needs to be done. And being that we are looking at putting a new town garage in at some point in time, and that that's in a swamp that does not have town sewer. I guess I'd like to see us put sewer, sewer line over to the, over to the, uh, town barn. And also, join District One and District Two. The fire district on water. And start giving Dave the, go ahead to start looking into some of this. And put that into a motion.
Union Street, Champlain Street.
Union Street, um, Champlain Street.
And fire districts.
Fire District One and Two.
Sort of a town garage.
Sort of, yeah, something, and the Newton Road pump station. I mean, it's...
Now, with the, with the district, the fire one and two, hold the, hold the town, I mean, we're...
I don't know.
I, I do know, cause you just have, fill you in a little bit with that, so we don't throw money somewhere that we don't need to.
Yeah.
Um, right now, I believe the, well, I, I know that the districts are, are talking right now to, so fire one doesn't have to incur any connection fees.
Right.
Take over that.
And like I said, this was just something that, I could talk to briefly with Dave, and I'd, I'd just, and that would be, and that would be the last, I should say that would be the last thing that I would put, would be the water, because our, our pump station, um, Newton Road is in dire need of work. Union Street's in dire need of work, and like I said, if we're gonna ever do anything with the town garage, um, that's on its own septic right now, and something happened, that's never gonna perfect again.
So with fire district one and fire district two, I, I was on the fire district two board for quite a while, they only, they have limited funds.
Right, right, and I'm just making sure, so put the money in this, in the right district to pay for the connection fee.
Connection fee, you know, the connection with, Brandon I talked about a bit last week, but as far as I know, they still have a cost on it yet.
No.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I adjust the board?
Mr.主任.
Uh, so, uh, we had, at our three and a half hour long slide of a meeting that we had at the fire district last week, we talked about ARPA funding, uh, and we talked about projects and project priorities for us, if we were able to, um, induce the select board to kick some money over to water infrastructure as a part of that three-legged stool of the initiatives with the ARPA funding, um, and those were, two of those projects were things that were, just the Union Street project and the connection potential of absorbing fire district two and connecting the fire, you know, making those connections. So, I mean, the, the board has already sort of indicated that, you know, we actually asked Ray to get some, some numbers on what that could possibly cost to connect to, you know, to absorb fire district two into fire district one. And that we would support any Union Street project.
So from that point of view, what we're talking about is Brandon got an allotment. And the town is kind of being looked at as like the umbrella entity for the allotment. But there are other entities within the town that would have qualified ARPA spending projects.
Correct.
That would benefit people in the town.
Yes.
So we would be in some kind of partnership situation or grant-making situation to the fire districts to do some work together.
That's what we, yeah.
That's what we're trying to do, okay.
So, we've, and we've done that with like Park Street, Second Six, we've done...
You say we've been, we've been doing that with all the construction stuff that we've been doing.
So the fire, the fire district got nothing directly from ARPA?
No.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
And what, and, and inquiries are made to, uh, our, uh, Republican senate commission, Eric Hall, uh, and confirmed what we all suspected that, you know, that the municipality and select board has the, you know, ability to grant that money to the district, but we, we will not get any money, any of that money granted to us unless it is...
So, so it seems like it might be helpful to start to have some dollar figures, so we could actually make choices about, you know, where money goes to this pile, this one.
So again, a little ahead here on that one.
Great.
So if, if this, if this gets approved this evening, um, I've already talked with Aldridge Chalilla about getting engineering going on scoping and cost for the Newton Road pump station. Um, I have a tentative meeting planned with Dave Conger from DuBois King, uh, to give cost estimates for the Union Street water sewer. I haven't done anything yet with the connection for the highway garage, but if Aldridge Chalilla is here, I can get that done, and we're just waiting on, wait this number for the...
So when you say if it gets approved, I guess what I'm thinking is that, um, we, we'd have those numbers before we agree to where all the money is. So I mean, is, is the idea we're gonna be approving the, um...
Not gonna have numbers until you get a scope and study done, we still have to follow.
And, and I guess, I guess, and that's what I'm, I, I guess that's what my motion would be, was to let Dave move forward with the scope of...
Yeah, and, and then we come back.
Then come back with the numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, you can't, I know, I didn't, I didn't mean that as a, just to, to let it go ahead with the numbers and get the numbers on all this.
Well, and, and another thing that's kind of like that, um, that, you know, to, to get back to the kind of broader sense of, you know, where can ARPA go? And what can we do, and how we originally came up with two things that we couldn't do? There's been some discussion about, um, that the possibility that we could use ARPA money for, um, energy, a project that had to do with water sewer. And so it's interesting to consider whether or not there's some way we could figure out how much, you know, water and sewer uses, and possibly the fire department. And, um, and, and then, you know, use the landfill site, for example, as a, a landfill solar, um, so we could use some of the ARPA money for that. Wouldn't require all of it, but I just think that any way we can try to get some money into the solar piece is gonna be cash in our pockets going forward. And that's why I'm, I'm looking for creative ways to, um, to satisfy the ARPA. You get, you get what I mean?
Yeah.
So maybe we could look, you know, into that as well.
So, I understand your approach with solar. My dilemma here is that it's sort of my watch right now for overseeing these types of projects. And we all know that, pretty much all of us in this room have heard how much the wastewater treatment plant had been sort of neglected through the years, and that money was not put into it, that we have this aging infrastructure, that when it breaks, you know, the state then comes down and says, well, now we're gonna find you. We've gone through that one, sorry. I don't wanna see that happening, I would rather see us, if this money's given, if this money is being given to municipalities, and they're telling us whatever project applies for clean water money and drinking water money through state reliving loan, that those projects are already qualified. All four of those projects are already qualified for that, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's money being handed to us to put into that infrastructure right there, I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
Oh, I think we should, I just think that this is also another good...
Right, and that's where I'm at, is I, I just think that this money, with the aging infrastructure that we got, um, when you get a gift like this, that we ought to be, we ought to be fixing what we got.
Well, I...
And I, I hear where you're coming from, too.
The idea is that the solar would produce money to let us do more projects going forward, and I mean, that's always been the, the idea, is that it would, it would actually create a cash flow for us to, to do future projects.
And I guess I would have that debatable, I guess, at some point in time, but...
Okay.
On, on how much it would accumulate and... For numbers going forward, but, um, yeah, I really think too that you total up these numbers, and like I said, we aren't gonna know until we get a cost.
Right. We need a cost.
You know, we can say here, we can go back and forth on, until, until we have a number on some of these projects, we are, we can't really do much of anything, but... And that's why I said I'd like to have, like, then Dave just started on getting, getting those numbers on, at least those four projects to start with.
I'd like to see the numbers too.
So I'm just to let you know, too, that there is a cost associated with getting the cost, like, you know, I, it's gonna be about eleven grand for a scope and study on the Newton Road pump station, I know that right off the bat.
Now, is that, money's something that eventually we can use the separate money for?
Well, it would be, including our...
I mean, if we, if we have to pay it before we get the...
If we, well, it's spring, yeah, well, we've got our funds already.
Oh, yeah, right, great.
How are we gonna move forward with the project, I'd hate to see us spend money on, you know, what I'm saying, I mean, it's kind of...
Well, the scoping setting sounds like it's a good idea.
Well, we have to do it anyway, that's just, that's what we have to do.
Yeah. But I, I think what he's saying is... We're gonna lay out money.
We're gonna lay out twelve thousand dollars rubber.
And probably we could lay that out from the wastewater budget.
Well, we have ARPA funds already.
I know, but we can't just start chipping away at ARPA funds like we chip away at the one percent money with our direction.
Maybe a little urgency I'm gonna try to throw everybody's way, that the Newton Road pump station is failing miserably, I mean, we have been repairing it and pulling it along easily since I ran, probably before that, like, that's something that we're gonna have to figure out and throw money at anyway. There's no way around it, so.
And how many, how many connections are in that, how many homes?
Well, it's whatever comes.
Is it everything from, is it everything on Newton Road above the station? Like east of the station?
Yeah, and Middle Road and...
Oh, there's also that that comes in? I think it gets forced which way?
It gets forced back to the main, which is back...
East, I believe. Like it gets forced toward the post office? And then where's it go?
I don't know, I have to, I don't know, I, I can't.
I think it gets pumped up to the junction storage area, and then down to the tree.
That's a, kind of a...
It's, it's a, it's a strange way to do it, but the, the up at the pump station at the lowest point, or to pick it back up to...
And it's a strong enough pump that it's forcing?
There, yes, there's a lot of pressure and all, when it blow up, right?
A lot of trying, and, and, you know, a lot of things gone through, a couple floods too, so it's...
So, my question was only from the point of view, you know, we've had this initiative to talk about folks relocating out of the blah, blah, blah. Um, but if we're talking about more than just Newton Road, we're talking about behind the post office.
The only thing we would be able to do with that pump station, if folks continued to do buyouts, was push it more further east, east on the road, that's really it. So.
And that would entail getting land or something, because all this IO stuff, we couldn't put a pump station?
No, we have to put it like at the post office at this point, so.
Make it part of the new bridge, Dave.
I don't know, hopefully.
I'm sure that Dave would love to say the post office.
Yeah.
For a pump station.
For a pump station.
Okay, interesting, interesting stuff, so...
So do we need a second round here, half second?
Okay, so the motion is second, and what is the motion?
I have to authorize the town manager to report the scoping studies for the Newton Road pump station, Union Street water and sewer, sewer connection to the town garage and combining District One and Two.
So what would you do, um, if this, if this vote happens tonight, and you get authorized to do all these things? And you're authorized to do a scoping study with the Union, with the Newton Road pump station? What would your logistics be for paying for that study?
Well, we'd have to pay a cloud of wastewater or something first.
Wastewater.
Yeah, I...
And that, that can happen?
We're gonna have to do one anyway, there's no way around it, whether we use ARPA or not at this point, we've gotta get that thing fixed, so.
Would the, um, is the Champlain Street pump station low enough that we would be a gravity line from the town garage to it, or not?
No, we'd have to put a pump in.
Put a pump in the town garage.
But it's not anywhere near like the Champlain Street pump station or...
And are there other homes to be serviced by it?
I don't think so, we were thinking about that, I don't think there's anything else. But if we, if we move forward with building the garage...
No.
If we move forward with building the highway garage, though, I doubt we're gonna have to get permitted for a new septic system down there.
That can...
Is that the best spot for a highway barn?
It's the only spot we have.
I mean, it's not, it's not the best spot.
It's not the best spot, but that's what we've got.
It's what we've got, but like, I mean, people move them sometimes, like, you know, is there a better spot if we were building a new highway barn, should we not build it there?
Like on the site or...
On the site, should, should we find a new site?
We have to acquire land.
We don't have anything to do with it?
Not, that's not in flood plain or swamp.
They could be a hell of a fish sale, make or not, the way end of, um, horse door, or anything.
Doesn't do a driveway.
With a new dresser.
I can't...
I'm just saying, if we're thinking about a new highway barn, um, why stick with the spot if the spot's got a lot of limitations?
Well, I don't know what else we'd be doing down there to make it bigger, I mean, most of what we need to do is have better buildings than what are there. You know, at some point, we should have a shed for our salt, similar to what the structure we just put up. And, you know, the, the highway garage is rotting, so it's...
And, and with that salt shed design, uh, you notice a lot of the towns that are putting new ones up, they're a lot bigger and there's a lot more involvement in those than just a wooden pole fire.
And I don't, I mean, I don't think the limit, the, the limitation there, I think the biggest limitation there for, uh, building a new town barn is gonna be, is gonna be the septic.
Yeah.
That's gonna be their, that's gonna be the biggest limitation for, for turning up a new town barn.
So we'd, we'd be, um, spending enough bucks that we'd be like doing some act 250 stuff?
On the building? Well, we, if we start doing a different site plan and everything, I mean, we don't, we have no idea what the septic is down there, so... We would, you know, if we're putting a, a full bathroom in and other stuff, yeah, we're gonna have to pull permits for that.
You'd be able to fully redesign it, though.
Yeah.
Right, so, so what I'm asking is, you know, is the property near enough to wetlands and stuff of that nature that it maybe wouldn't be blessed?
Well, we could get it, we could ask for a sheet to be done like we did down near the park a lot, to see if it's...
Like a, they do like pre-clearance or something?
You can actually, you can actually go on VCLT, they have interactive maps to show active wetlands, and it's updated pretty frequently.
And they have the, the ANR maps, or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can actually measure off them.
But we're not, we're not wetland where we are, if we wanted to expand south or west, we would be. But I don't think we'd have room for a secondary septic system down there, or to even make what's there bigger, so, it, it should be on town sewer.
Any public comment? Further board comment? So, we've had a motion in the second, so this is discussion, so, um, is there, um, some order of magnitude of money that you're planning on spending on these other projects, um, to scope them out? I mean, you said eleven thousand to do the, the pump station setup?
The voice came on Wednesday to figure, to start talking about...
And is there an amount of money for that scoping?
Um, not yet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how far down the road we're gonna get on spending the money before we decide kind of who's gonna get the final pieces, because
spending the money before we decide kind of who's gonna get the final pieces, cause the way I had thought we'd left it is that there was still, especially having the new larger amount, the one point one million, that there was gonna be some more outreach to try to figure out if people had, kind of like the fire department, you know, whether they wanna be submitting suggestions for how we use this ARCA money.
Yeah, what else can we do with it though?
Well, I agree, I'm not sure...
You know, I, I think one reason like when Eric was here and said they open it to MRGP work now too, like, you know, you look at all these lead towns, they have no water, no sewer, what are they, they don't have anything to spend on, and now they do, because now they can do their ditching and, you know, stonework and stuff on their dirt roads for, you know, to, for their MRGP permit stuff. There's not a lot of wiggle room here, really, they're, you know, I mean, I think of the list that we had last time, when they were getting rid of traffic, like, put more sidewalks in, like, there's just all this stuff that's not even eligible project for, like, water sewer, we know it, it's eligible, and, and, that's, it just seems like that's a simple decision to make, that, like, that infrastructure needs to be updated and redone, and why don't we use this free money to do it, so we're not paying more for it later down the road?
Exactly. So if you had a twelve thousand dollar scoping bill for the Newton Road pump station, is that something that you can authorize? Like, would you authorize that as town manager, or is that something you bring to the board?
It's two thousand dollars over mine, so I have to bring it to you.
You bring it to the board. Does that answer your question about the other element side? I think, you know, like, I think Dave has authority to ten thousand dollars, and beyond that, he'd be bringing stuff to the board, is that fair?
Yeah, I'd certainly love to have the numbers that you'll try and generate, so great, let's do that.
Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say no. You don't have any extensions, that was five, okay, that's announced, great. Okay, eight A, the warrant is dated October eleventh, is there a motion?
I'd like to motion approve the warrant, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars, sixty cents.
Perfect, or a second?
I'll say it.
Second. Any questions? I have questions, probably not fair to ask you, but on the back, why are there all these bond payments and some are negative numbers? I don't know that I've ever had a warrant come to the board with negative numbers.
Negative, one of those is the same number.
Oh, in each case?
Yeah. Oh, does it, one of the previous page states the same number?
I'm not sure whether it does.
Okay, so, I know one of us just pointed out to me that there's a canceling transaction immediately above each of them.
One of these, so the Park Street bond, I know they originally, because that shouldn't be on here, were billing us for the whole volume portion, but we should be getting those with our different, so...
And I can, we just authorized a check, I know, for thirty-one thousand, change if they can pay one of those bond payments to the town, we gotta go for it.
So...
You gotta build it the town, or you gotta build it the bond maker?
I think for the town.
The town.
For Park Street, should be...
Park Street, major bond maker.
So it looks like is what they ended up doing here, so, is, Sue took money out of one of the line items and put it into another line item for this payment, so...
Okay.
I've gotta look at that, I can't run these numbers right up, but it could've come out of, so we have Route Seven, oh, well, there's some bond money in here that came out for, for Route Seven, so that could've been one of them, one of the reasons why. Yeah, cause we have the Route Seven bond, PD bond, the Second Six bond, and then two are wastewater.
Any questions about any of the items? Ready to vote? All in favor of approval of the warrant as it was presented, say aye.
Aye.
Or aye, and opposed, say no, ayes have. Perfect, so at, any announcements for the good of the community? None heard, okay, so at seven fifty-four, seven fifty-five, we'll call the board to recess.